Amen. You are welcome to the house of the Lord tonight. Amen. Today is Friday. I believe all the midweek services will come to an end today, with the exception of tomorrow for that concert. And on Sunday, we will wrap up this revival. Like we have been saying every night, if you have not received anything from the Lord, you still have another chance tonight. May God come and bless tonight. May God come and meet every need tonight. It has pleased Him for us to be in the land of the living. We want to glorify His name. Amen. Our services tonight, we already been favored by the piano and the organ selection right there. Bodies are lifted at Calvary. Amen. May your body be lifted up tonight. May mine be lifted up tonight. Amen. In Jesus' name. After that, we're going to have orchestration. The orchestration we have here, there's a sweet spirit, but there's another change right here. I believe this is a closer walk. Whatever it is, we're going to have that orchestration that we come now. Then we're going to have choir selection. Come die with us. Come die with us. That's choir selection. After which, we're going to have congregational song. Then after that, we're going to have the announcement. Then we're going to look into another, you know, after opening prayer. After opening prayer, then all the testimonies tonight. We're going to have two. Two good testimony tonight. May God come and bless us through that word of testimony. Orchestration now. Good evening. We are starting this night of revival by opening a hymnbook, collected gospel song to 245. 245. "Loving Savior, hear my cry." "Hear my cry, hear my cry. Trebling to thy arms I fly, oh, save me at the cross." "I have seen, but thou hast died. Thou hast died, thou hast died. In thy mercy let me hide, oh, save me at the cross." "Lord Jesus, receive me. No more will I grieve thee. Now, Blessed Redeemer, oh, save me at the cross." Let's sing through all the verses of the song after the introduction. "Loving Savior, hear my cry, hear my cry, hear my cry. Trebling to thy arms I fly, oh, save me at the cross. I have seen, but thou hast died, thou hast died, thou hast died. In thy mercy let me hide, oh, save me at the cross. Lord Jesus, receive me. No more will I grieve thee. Now, Blessed Redeemer, oh, save me at the cross. Though I perish, I will pray, I will pray, I will pray. Thou of life, that living will, oh, save me at the cross. Thou hast said, thy grace is free. Grace is free, grace is free. Thou have compassion, Lord of me, oh, save me at the cross. Lord Jesus, receive me. No more will I grieve thee. Now, Blessed Redeemer, oh, save me at the cross. Wash me in thy cleansing blood. Cleansing blood, cleansing blood. Pludge me now, beneath the flood, oh, save me at the cross. Holy faith, we pardon pray, pardon pray, pardon pray. In thy faith, today I claim, oh, save me at the cross. Lord Jesus, receive me. No more will I grieve thee. Now, Blessed Redeemer, oh, save me at the cross." Amen. Amen? 249. Let's just do first and the last verse only. "Jesus, my Lord, to thee I cry. Unless thou help me, I must die. Oh, bring thy fair salvation nigh, and take me as I am. And take me as I am. My only pre-Christ died for me. Oh, take me as I am." May God come and do that for every one of us tonight in Jesus' name. The first and the last verse only after the introduction. "Jesus, my Lord, to thee I cry. Unless thou help me, I must die. Oh, bring thy fair salvation nigh, and take me as I am. And take me as I am. And take me as I am. My only pre-Christ died for me. Oh, take me as I am. Behold me, Savior, I thy feet. The way, as thou sayest in me. Thy war began, thy war complete. Oh, take me as I am. And take me as I am. And take me as I am. Oh, the Holy Spirit can die for me. Oh, take me as I am." Amen. Our prayer song is from hymnbook 403. Our prayer song is 403. "When the power of God descended on the day of Pentecost, all the days of waiting ended, and they received their Holy Ghost." And I'm sure that is what we expected tonight. In our homes, we want the Spirit of God to fill us in the mighty name of Jesus. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now and baptize everyone. Fill and seal us with thy presence. Grind the blessing that we need. Flood our soul with wondrous glory while the prayer of faith we plead. Oh, Lord, we are just pleading. Send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Let's do the first, the third, and the last verse. The last verse we shall sing standing, after which we shall be led in prayer. "When the power of God descended on the day of Pentecost, on the days of waiting ended, they received the Holy Ghost. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. And baptize every one. We are waiting, Holy Spirit. We are all of one and whole. Love, feel just now thy promise that is given in thy war. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. And baptize everyone. Fill and thrill us with thy presence. Grind the blessing that we need. Flood our soul with wondrous glory while the prayer of faith we plead. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. And baptize everyone." Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Oh, Lord, send the power just now. Flood our hearts with heavenly glory. Do this for us, oh, Lord. We thank you for this week of revival. We thank you for the blessings received. We thank you for the blessing that will be received. Lord, accept our thanks. Lord, accept our praise. We thank you for your unction upon the men that we have used. Lord, accept our thanks. We have come again tonight, Father, in the name of Jesus, because you are not tired to bless all that have seen many needs. Oh, Lord, even on spoken request, we bring everybody everything before you tonight. Come down, oh, God. No, come down, oh, God. The Bible says you send your word and you heal them. Send your word through the man of God tonight. Send your word, even in our various locations. Let your word find us out. Send your blessing. Send your blessing. Blessings of salvation, blessings of sanctification, blessings of Holy Ghost baptizing, blessings of healing, blessings of reanointing. Do this for us, oh, Lord. Let your name be glorified, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. We are all welcome to God's house tonight and in all our different places. God is everywhere. We can feel it. We can feel Him in our spirit. We can feel Him where we pray. You can be in your living room tonight. God is there. Wherever you are, once you are in one accord, once you are in one spirit with us here, the services that we are having here, even though the condition, you know, constrain us, oh, not to be able to gather together, but we believe that God is omnipresent. He is wherever two or three are gathered, he said in the midst, he shall be. Amen. We thank God to remind us one more time the theme of our special meeting. Behold, I will do a new thing. Now it shall spring forth, Isaiah 43, verse 19. May God come and do new things for us. Amen. We thank God and welcome all our internet audience. We welcome you tonight. If this is the first night that you are joining us, you are welcome. We count you, you know, to be lucky tonight, because the word of God is going to come out, oh, with power and all. oh, with power, and all of us going to be blessed. So, well, you keep on thanking God that you are numbered with those that will be blessed tonight. Amen. Our schedule for the week remained the same. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we're going to be having our concert, the replay of the concert that we had during the dedication. That one will come on five P M. Five P M tomorrow. Please make sure that you log on and you enjoy yourself. Should Jesus tarry on Sunday, nine thirty A M, we're going to have Sunday School, we're going to have Sunday School. And our main class on Sunday is going to be taught by one of our, you know, retired pastors and one of our elder from Watin, New Jersey, Reverend Titus Honney, is going to be, you know, teaching us on Sunday on growth. Amen. So, please, all of you, log on and enjoy Sunday School. Eleven A M, Sunday devotional service will take place, and our brother from Portland, Oregon, Reverend Sam Ajayi, will be preaching for us. And in the evening, four P M, that will be a wrap-up for this special meeting. We will have Evening of Revival and Evangelistic Service, when Brother Foncho Ojo will be preaching for us. Amen. Some special announcement here. On Saturday, that's tomorrow, that's June thirteenth, three P M, we're going to be having Sunday School Teachers Round Table Conference. It's still going to be online, it's still going to be online. Amen, three P M. Amen. On Sunday, the parents of the elementary Sunday School children should join the class, that's one P M, one P M, via Zoom apps to do their Sunday School. The junior class, Sunday School, will take place at two P M via Zoom apps. Amen. And as we have said before, our topic for the main class on Sunday will be growth, and grow as a Christian. Amen. And I hope all of us, we are doing our daybreak reading. Amen, everything is coming to an end in the book of Proverbs. We have started this week with Proverbs twenty-two, and we are reading through Proverbs thirty-one. Proverbs thirty-one, we should finish that one on Sunday. Amen. Like we said, tonight, we're supposed to have a regular Bible study, but because of the meeting, we will postpone that to next Friday. So, study your discovery very well. The topic for the Bible study next Friday will be the Proverbs of Solomon. Amen. And tonight, we have another wonderful package for us. Our pastor from our church, from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Reverend Ena Eppen, is the one in charge of this region. He will be preaching for us tonight, live remote. Live remote, that's from home, right there. May God water his mouth with truth, that the word of God will do us good, that that word will be written at the table flesh of our heart, that we may not forget. After that sermon, then we're going to have the closing prayer. But remember, in between, after this announcement, after this announcement, we're going to be favored with two, with two testimonies. One from Brother Victor Arrow from our church at Washington, D.C. Brother Victor Arrow is one of the pioneers too, all the way from two sixty-five. Amen, giving his apartment, you know, for a little prayer meeting there, that the work sprang up to become like this. Tonight, he will be testifying for us. And when he finishes, our brother from Watin, New Jersey, that is at Poughkeepsie, that's Brother Sam Dari Bangbushi, Brother Sam Dari Bangbushi also will be testifying. Amen. Please listen to all these testimonies. You can see what God has done for these brothers. And we can say, Lord, I am jealous, do same thing for me too. Amen. So, after that, the special, that's the duet by the Fulani girls. We do, "Do you know my Jesus?" After that, Reverend Ena Eppen will come.
Good evening, brethren, God bless you. It's indeed a privilege to be a part of an ongoing revival at Oceanside, New York. I know God has been blessing these people, and I do want to thank God for his blessings. I want to thank God for saving me, sanctifying me, and filling me with the Holy Ghost on fire. I want to thank God for establishing me in this gospel. I want to thank God for many, many things he has done for me, for his provision, for his enduring mercy, for his grace. I want to thank God for those that God has placed in my life to be blessing to me, starting from my grandmother, my late grandmother, my mother, and my uncles, who labored in this gospel for many years. I want to thank God for the solid foundation and the godly heritage. I want to thank God that he has been marvelous. He has healed me, and even raised me from dead. He has been all in all for me. I want to thank God that I had the privilege of coming to this country about thirty-one years ago, and he has been able to open doors for me, and more importantly, to
opportunity to testify to the power and greatness of God. I had the privilege of being born into this marvelous gospel of Jesus Christ, and that afforded me the opportunity to be raised in a godly home, to be taught the word of God, to participate in church activities. But all those were not enough, because I had not had a personal encounter with God. But I thank God, one glorious day, God saved my soul. I had a sincere conversation with God about the direction of my life. I confessed my sins, and let God know that he's the only one that can help me. He did help me, he came into my life, he saved me, he sanctified me, and later on filled me with Holy Ghost on fire. Since then, God has been walking with me. But the devil is not, was, wasn't happy, and he's still not happy. At some point, I had to go through the loss of a lost, of a loved one. And, but God was with me. He comforted me, he gave me what I needed, and he provided an opportunity for me to come to the United States for my graduate studies. He blessed me with all that I needed during my program. God blessed me with a Christian wife, and together we've been running the race. But along the way, we had challenges as well, and it got to a point that this seems overwhelming. And I told my wife, can we go for a walk? And during that walk, I was speaking about what God has done for us in the past, and that he can help us even in our situation. And during that talk, I got a call from one of the ministers of the church in Houston, asking us if we were okay, because Pastor just mentioned a name in the prayer meeting that you should specially pray for us, and just wanted to know if we are fine. I said, it is well. But I turned to my wife and said, you see, that's an assurance that God has answered that prayer. And indeed, God answered that prayer. Since after that day, things started turning around for good. God started providing for us. God provided me a, a job with scholarship. God took us to California. God blessed us with the people of God over there, and success on the job. Came back, God blessed us with a beautiful daughter. And we went back again, everything was working, and it seems that all plans are working for my Ph.D. graduation. But as time goes on, it seems that what seemed set and planned is really not working, and things started to crumble. But through it all, we learned to trust in Jesus. We learned to depend fully on the Lord. It was challenging, but the Lord was with us, because he had always been with us. And I had to go through multiple interview process. Sometimes it seems like, oh, I got this job, and at the last minute, something happens, it doesn't work out. It seems that, yes, it's theirs, and all of a sudden, it seems that I'm not getting it, and, you know. But we're committing everything to God in prayer. And in God's own time, he started providing opportunities. Companies that I did not directly apply to started calling me. I got my first job offer, I got my second job offer, I got my third job offer. And we were thankful to God, because he did not fail us. But then, the devil was still not happy. The documents I needed to start my work, I wasn't getting them on time, and there were so many delays, and I kept pushing forward my start dates every time. But thank God, God helped solve that problem. And, but then, before then, I had a tooth infection that I had to go through multiple procedures. And after that, we had to move to New York. One of, our car broke down, a second car that we were traveling with broke down in the middle of the highway, and almost exploded with smokes all over. We had to go rent a car. The car, we, when we got to New York, there was no place to stay immediately. We had to stay in the hotel when the place was ready, and we moved. Somebody hit our car, we don't know who did that, and, and I started a job. And, you know, things were just happening, one problem to another, one problem to another. And it got to a point, I told my pastor, Brother James, that please pray along with us. And, you know, God answers prayer. In the midst of all these challenges, one day I was in my office, and I looked up to God, and I said, God, is my story going to be that I loved the Lord, I trusted the Lord, but failed? In one minute, God answered my prayers. I, God gave me a sign that my prayer was answered. And shortly after that, things started turning around for good. Everything started working, everything that seemed delayed, we now realized that everything was working together for good. This is our God, he's great, he knows exactly what we need. And I just want to thank him for how he has blessed me, how he has blessed my family, and how he has blessed the people of God. Please keep us in your prayers, that one day, I want to see my Lord, I want to see Jesus, with all the saints that I've done before. Please keep us in your prayers.
Have your heart that weary, tending a load of care? Are you a soul that seeking breath from the burden you bear? Do you know, do you know, my Jesus? Do you know, do you know, my friend? Have you heard, have you heard, he loves you? And that he will abide till the end, till the end? Where is your heart, oh pilgrim? What does your light reveal? Who hears your call for comfort? When no gods are all you fear? Do you know, do you know, my Jesus? Do you know, do you know, my friend? Have you heard, have you heard, he loves you? And that he will abide till the end, till the end? Who knows your disappointment? Who knows each time you cry? Who understands your heart aches? Who dry the tears from your eyes? Do you know, do you know, my Jesus? Do you know, do you know, my friend? Have you heard, have you heard, he loves you? And that he will abide till the end? Do you know, do you know, my Jesus? Do you know, do you know, my friend? Have you heard, have you heard, he loves you? And that he will abide till the end, till the end?
Thank you very much for inviting me to be a part of this evangelistic meeting tonight. Thank God for the blessings during the week of this revival. For the short time that we have, we want to read from Second Peter, chapter one. We want to read a few verses from there. I, Simon Peter, servant and an apostle of Jesus Christ to them that have obtained like precious faith with us through the righteousness of God and our Savior Jesus Christ. Grace and peace be multiplied unto you through the knowledge of God and of Jesus our Lord, according as his divine power has given unto us all things that pertain unto life and godliness, through the knowledge of him that hath called us to glory and virtue, whereby are given unto us exceeding great and precious promises, that by these ye might be partakers of the divine nature, having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. Wherefore, and beside this, giving all diligence, add to your faith virtue, and to virtue knowledge, and to knowledge temperance, and to temperance patience, and to patience godliness, and to godliness brotherly kindness, and to brotherly kindness charity. For if these things be in you and abound, they make you that ye shall neither be barren nor unfruitful in the knowledge of our Lord Jesus Christ. But he that lacketh these things is blind, and cannot see afar off, and hath forgotten that he was perched from his old sins. Wherefore, the rather brethren, give diligence to make your calling and election sure; for if ye do these things, ye shall never fall. For so an entrance shall be ministered unto you abundantly in the everlasting kingdom of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. For our topic, we want to take a team of bodybuilders. Now, Jesus often referred to his church as a vine with branches. Jesus being the vine and the members of the body being the branches. You can be a member of this body, but you need to be saved. That is the foundation to becoming a member of the body of Christ. Revelation three verse ten says, at verse twenty six says, "Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man will hear my voice and open the door, I will come into him and sit with him and here with me." So tonight, if you are not a member of the body of Christ, you can be right now by turning over your life unto Jesus Christ. But if you are born again, you have all that you need. You have all that you need. It says there in verse three, "According as his divine power hath given unto us all things that pertain unto life and godliness through the knowledge of him that hath called us to glory and virtue." That moment you were saved, Christ come into your life. Christ come into my life. And it is a wonderful miracle that has ever happened because of the cross of Calvary. It is a miracle of the cross. For John three sixteen says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him shall not perish but have everlasting life." When Christ comes in, he comes in with all of heaven to inhabit your life and my life. All of heaven. It is a great miracle. It says in verse four, "whereby are given unto us exceeding great and precious promises, that by these ye might be partakers of the divine nature." Do you imagine that? To be a partaker of the divine nature. That is the nature of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost is in dwelling in us the moment we give our life to Jesus Christ. The divine nature. So if we look at Galatians, chapter five, verse twenty-two and twenty-three, it states what that divine, some of what that divine nature is, we cannot comprehend all. But it let us know, the fruit of the spirit is love, joy, peace, long suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness. Temperance against such, there is no law. This contribute constitute the divine nature in the life of a Christian. Born again, Christian of God, by faith, you have the divine nature. But it doesn't end there. In order to grow into divine, each branch must consistently draw strength. Each branch must consistently draw strength from the vine. The growth of the vine itself is the growth of the branches. You cannot have a vine without a branch. The vine depend on the branches to share his fruits to others. And the branches must draw consistently from the vine in order to be fruitful branch. And that is why it says in beginning from verse five that we read that um beside this, beside this, beside love, joy, peace, long suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance, beside this, add giving all diligence, giving all diligence, add to your faith, virtue, and so on. And then it run down to say, "But if these things be in you and abound, they make you that ye shall neither be barren nor unfruitful in the knowledge of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ." In short, if these things be in you and abound, that is overflow, they make you that ye shall be fruitful. So the life that we live, our character, our behavior is dependent on the overflow of the divine nature that flows from Jesus Christ to us. And then it will meet the needs of others. The excess will meet the needs of others. Take a mango tree or any fruit-bearing tree. People will go come around that tree because it is bearing much fruit and everybody will enjoy going there. This is what Jesus want his body to be to the world. A fruitful vine where everyone that comes in will enjoy the blessing of Jesus Christ. And he's doing that through his branches. He said, "I will build my church." And he's building his church through the diligence of each and every member of the church, that is you and I. When we are saved, when we are sanctified, when you are filled with the Holy Spirit, it is only a beginning. We have to be diligent in adding to our faith. What is gonna be the outcome of this exercise? Diligent exercise, what is gonna be the outcome? Is is our character is gonna change. Everything about us is not gonna be for us. It's gonna be about a Savior who is divine. Our life is gonna reflect brotherly love. In First Peter one twenty-two, it says, "Saying ye have purified your souls in obeying the truth through the Spirit unto unfeign love of the brethren. See that ye love one another with a pure heart fervently." That is number one, to show that we love God. The proof is our genuine love. It say unfeign love, not fake, not hypocritical, but genuine divine overflow of Jesus that is upon us. Our brethren is gonna benefit from it. It's just, i- it's not something you are scraping. It's because you are adding to your faith. This thing is just gonna keep flowing automatically to reach the brethren. It said, "Do we see that ye love one another with a pure heart fervently?" That is number one proof. I mean, David say, "I was glad when they say unto me, 'Let us go into the house of the Lord.'" Why? I want to see my brethren, the fellowship of the brethren. There is nothing better in this world than to be in the midst of the brethren. Behold, how good it is for brethren to live together in unity. Psalm one hundred and thirty-three. It says, "There the Lord will command his blessing, even life forevermore. When the brethren are together in one accord, in one heart, in one mind, in one place, the spirit of God is there, Jesus Christ is there, the Father, the Son is there. Prayers will be answered. Miracles will happen. Soul will be saved. The law will draw from here and there to fill his house." Why? Because of the love among the brethren. Nobody, there is nobody that does not like where there is love. Everybody wants love. And it will be seen in the congregation of a growing people of God that are diligently adding to their faith. As we, if you read that place, you you see where it says that if we do these things and abound, it shall make that we shall be fruitful. I, that double negative that says we shall neither be barren nor unfruitful. It just mean fruitful. But those are lack these things. Why? Why do they lack? It's not that they didn't have it. It's just that they are no more diligently adding, using the power that God has given to them already to seek more of it, to seek more than they relax. We don't wanna be any, there is, we don't want any of us to be in that number. Brotherly love will show. In Romans twelve verse ten, it said, "Be kindly affection one to another with brotherly love in honor, preferring one another." We will open our heart and life to people. No selfishness. Our yes is our yes. Our no is our no. Because of the flow of the love of God from Jesus Christ, there is no secret covered. Our heart is open to uh to ad- ad- uh uh admit everybody. Kindly affection one to another with brotherly love in honor, preferring one another. We see that in David and Jonathan. It says Jonathan and David, they love each other as their own souls. Why? Because they had a definite goal to build the body of Christ, the church. The first church was Israel. And uh and Jonathan was excited to see a young man like him loving God to so much to kill Goliath. And he himself was determined to help David succeed. Even though he would have been the next thing after his father. But no. In honor, preferring one another. We will do this also if we diligently pray for God to give us these attributes, add these attributes. Our eyes will wanna prefer one another. Our heart, our character, we want to love and help each other to go forward, even to take our place. We will show love to the undeserving for the sake of our Savior Jesus Christ. In Ephesians two, four to five, "But God, who is rich in mercy for his great love, wherewith he loved us, even when we were dead in sin's heart, quickened us together with Christ. By by grace ye are saved." That is how we were before Christ took us. We were nobody. We were not fit. But Christ showed us undeserving kindness, undeserving love to die for us. "He who knew no sin became sin for us, that we might be made the righteousness of God in him." And that love is flowing through us as a branch. And we need to overflow that to everyone else. We cannot say he he will not appreciate it. No, there is no such thing. We didn't, we we, Christ knew about us that we were not, we couldn't do, we couldn't help ourselves. We were unkind. We we were haters and hate one another. But Christ through his love, he sent his word which convict us and we turn around. So the same way as the branches, we must grow as we feed from Jesus Christ. What other sign will show is compassion for the needy. In Hebrews eighteen, one to three, it says, "Let brotherly love continue. Be not forgetful to entertain strangers, for thereby some have entertained angels unawares. Remember them that are in bonds, as bound with them, and them which suffer adversity, as being yourselves also in the body." Compassion for the needy. Jesus says, "We will always have the poor among us." We don't need anybody to tell us what to do. It should be an overflow from what God has fed us. And then even i- when the, in in the Acts of the Apostle, we were told that everybody need were met. Those that have much did not have more than those that have nothing. Everybody share equally. There was nobody that go lonely or hungry or rejected. They need were met. Why? Because of the love of Christ flowing through the body. There was compassion for the needy. But we wanna thank God for what God is doing among us. We thank God for the love of the brethren. Thank God for how we care for the sick ones in our hu- in our midst. How we fervently praying that God will bring them out from sickness. And let's continue. Let the love of God continue. Let that brotherly love continue. It will do as long as we add to our faith. Our love will be sacrificial if we are diligently adding to our faith. Our love will be sacrificial. It says in Ephesians five verse two, He says in Ephesians 5:2, and walk in love as Christ also had loved us and had given himself for us, an offering and a sacrifice to God for a sweet smelling savor. You know, Jesus gave his life to establish and to preserve the body of Christ. It's not too much for us to do anything within our power to continue in what the veterans left for us. It is our generation now to rise up to make sure the bo- body of Christ grow. He says, ye will do more than what I do because I go to the Father. He said, the work that I do, you will do, and greater works than this shall ye do because I go to the Father. And we saw in the time of the apostles that everywhere they went, the Lord was walking with them, confirming their words with signs following. They were together in one accord. They struggled together, they lived together, they died together, they they bonded themselves together and the gospel prospered. It was added to their number daily. It was a short time before they cover the world in their own generation. And we wanna remind each other, this is a means of revival. What we are trying to discuss a few in a few here, not the whole thing, is a means of revival. This is what build the church. We talk about love of the brotherly love, talk about opening our heart and life to people, talk about showing love to the undeserving for the sake of our Savior Jesus Christ. We talk about compassion for the needy, talk about sacrificial love. Let's look at the veterans. Let's look at how much they suffered. Imprisonment. Many burned at stake, cast to the lions to eat. They were, they were stoned. They were stripped. They were persecuted in all forms of torments that they went through. But they were faithful. They were not backing down. Paul said, none of these things move me, that I might run my race with joy. And he did. Let's look in in our own days, our veterans, the people that had this gospel before us, what they went through in order to preserve the body of Christ. Many of them did not have the opportunity that we have today. Many of them did not even have university education. But they brought us up. And they kept us together. Now we feel everywhere. May God help us to do what we are doing, remembering that Christ's sacrifice loved us and had given us for us an offering and a sacrifice to God for a sweet smelling beverage. We wanna do whatever we are doing because the love of Christ constraints us. And we wanna be faithful, steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord. For as much as we know that our labor is not in vain, even if we die, it will not be in vain. Stephen was stoned to death. But he prayed, Father, forgive them, for they know not what they are doing. And right there, Paul consented to his death. And you know the story, what happened? Paul was converted. The death of Stephen did not stop the flow of the gospel, rather it inflamed the spread of the gospel. So whatever we may be going through, if we are diligent in growing ourself, in growing ourself, we will reap the fruitful fruits of righteousness of Christ. Temptation and trials will come, persecution. We might have name calls. But these are the light affliction in our own time. We need perseverance. We need temperance, we need that inner strength, we need to draw that inner strength from Christ and go through whatever it is. Knowing that those that are looking at us will benefit, will remember that we were faithful. The outcome will be good. The Bible say, if we love one another, by these shall all men know that we are his disciples. What does that mean? It will draw them to Jesus Christ because there is nobody that doesn't like love. They will be in our midst. There will be revival in our meetings and souls will be added to our congregation because of our faithfulness and diligently doing these things. We will be fruitful, joining together and growing into the head of the body, which is Jesus Christ. By being diligent, doing these things, we will never fall, the Bible say. And in conclusion, you wanna read what Peter was advising the church? Why he advised the church to do these things? Verse 12 says, therefore, I will not be negligent to put you always in remembrance of these things. What things? The things that he wanted us to add, add to your not faith, virtue into virtue, knowledge to knowledge, passion and so on. I will not be negligent to put you always in remembrance of these things, though ye know them. And be established in the present truth. Yeah, I think it meet, that is verse, I'm reading verse 12, 13 now. Yeah, I think it meet as long as I am in this tabernacle to stir you up by putting you in remembrance. Knowing that shortly I must put off this tabernacle, my tabernacle, even as our Lord Jesus Christ has showed me. Moreover, I will endeavor that ye may be able after my decease to have these things always in remembrance. For we have not following, we are not following cunningly devised fables when we made known unto you the power and coming of our Lord Jesus Christ, but we're witnesses of his majesty. So it is a good thing for us to remind ourselves. This has been from the beginning, this, the eye, Peter is talking as an eyewitness. This is how they, that is how they succeeded. Not other, no other way. On their knees, they were diligent, asking for grace to go through. When in trial, they asked God, send your Holy Spirit strengthen us and let miracles happen among their midst. God revealed them again and they continued to spread like wildfire. So may God help us, that's what I'm up now. If you are not saved, you can join the body of Christ. But let the body of Christ keep marching forth. Christ is our leader. He will build his church and the gates of hell will not prevail. But help, let each and every one of us be diligent faithfully doing what we need to do. And God bless you.
389. My holy gave me my strife is within. My patience in suffering, my sorrow foreseen. My faith in my Savior, my sense oh and sorrow is clear. My joy in service, my purpose in prayer three. My puring gave me my strength to overcome. My freedom for strength, my longings for hope. My me for the kingdom, my long 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 who I be. My fruitful, my holy, my Savior like thine. Eternal God, we thank you everlasting Father for the message this evening. We thank you everlasting Father because you love us. That is why, O Lord, almighty Father, you want us to strive, O Lord, to be more like you. Eternal God, you are divine. We can do nothing without you. And so, Lord, tonight, O Lord, we ask you, we plead your name, that as many, O Lord, that has not been connected to you, Lord, tonight, O Lord, come and save their soul. Lord, we need more of your love. We need more of your love. The love that was visible among your disciples when you left. Jesus of Nazareth, we ask you, we plead your name. Come down, O Lord, come and fill us. Lord, come down, O Lord, come and fill us. You told us the journey start with like obtain faith. Lord, come and increase our faith in you. Tonight, O Lord, we ask you, we plead your name, that you will answer all prayers. Heal diseases, O Lord. This we ask you, Father, in Jesus mighty name we pray, amen.